What? Oh. Okay.
Um, Luke is wondering if he could go first.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's nine AM. We'll call the meeting of the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, October 26th, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we Gable, would you lead us this morning?
To the United States of America and into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, if you have a cellphone, if you could please silence it or step out on the retunda to take it. We are streaming live on YouTube as well. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take calls from the public on items that are not on the agenda. And the two numbers that they can call are eight eight two six two four eight or eight eight two six two nine seven. And we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Um, we will change our agenda just a little bit. Uh, we're going to move Luke Muller up um as soon as we get done with approving our minutes and agenda. So, but item number three, are there any conflict to interest items?
No conflict.
Nope.
Okay. Item number four, action to approve October 26th, 2021 agenda with that move. Motion and second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve October 19th, 2021 minutes of the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners.
Shall move.
Shall move.
I got Waterman.
Yeah, the second.
Second.
Oh, and was there any additions or corrections? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that motion carries. All right, we will move then item number nine up and we'll have Luke come up and explain that to us, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. I thought we were heading off the rabbit in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Luke.
Good morning. Um, as Commissioner Waterman noted, I have increased my coffee intake today, so I'm going to rattle off pretty fast. The, what you have here is plat of Crans edition, sorry, plat of Nick and Matt Crans pasture additions in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter. Uh, that's actually not quite right, northwest quarter of section 15 uh in Sheridan Township. Okay, so where this is at is, this would be just over, what would we be, one, two, just over two miles south of highway 212, south of Watertown. Um, at that stoplight that would be over there, it's a little hot, over by Walmart going straight south there on the, the um bypass, south bypass. Uh, the other way for anyone who drives south down there would know that's uh right past the spillway on the Big Sioux River to the south is where that's located. Anyway, uh what we have here is a plat of seventy six point six five acres, mostly straddling the Big Sioux River. Uh, with a high part uh in the southwest corner of that is what's going on. It's being sold as a big tract of land uh for other purposes of building a house. Um, again, uh for someone eventually to build a house out there. Again, southwest corner would probably be the right part two dimensionally that uh makes a little bit of sense. But it's really a lot higher on that side. The only thing of note that I would put in here, other than it being irregularly shaped, is that if you look on the screen as to what um is being shown in the southeast corner of that piece. It really goes at a diagonal line, probably from the south to north, you know, at about a one o'clock angle. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Van Duzen. That would be, that piece is going to remain owned by the Cranses for farmland. Uh, and so we will have to have an agreement with them that indicates that they understand that that piece that's left is going to be less than thirty five acres and therefore doesn't retain a building right with it. I've spoken with the Cranses agent and they said that that was, they didn't mean for that to be the point. But again, we always have to be cognizant when we're creating a plat, not only of what we're making, but what we're leaving, and that's the case here. We gotta make sure there's access of which there is to that piece. And um if they don't intend to build, well, tell them, can't build that in this case. So that's it. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Do you have any questions or comments for Luke?
You said there is access to that.
Yeah, that piece that's left, there is, there's an easement all the way on the backside there.
Okay.
This is all in the floodplain?
Uh, the bulk of it, except for that southwest corner, which would be, like I said, two dimensionally, it looks like, wow, they're barely out of it, but it's pretty good size here on that southwest side. And plus with seventy eight acres, there's probably some dirt somewhere in there they could borrow to move up if they had to.
If, not for curiosity, another one that was approached, that was approached by, or for, if you've got forty acres out there in the country, thirty nine point five. If a portion of it is up there, under, in the flood zone, does that put the whole portion in there?
It depends. Um, the, for, for our purposes, regulatory, no, it doesn't. However, that doesn't necessarily, we have no weight over the banks. The banks, I, I could get into a long, a long drawn out discussion between FEMA and the banks on, on how they underwrite those. But they're going to manage their risk the best they can. They do have more or less a three hundred foot buffer laterally regardless of where the floodplain is at, that is arbitrary. Frankly, a good example is on Punished Woman's Lake where it goes off the lake for a ways, even though it's a twenty foot rise, it just does anyway. But at any rate, the, the point is, is that we regulate it, that the line is the line. Um, the banks can require flood insurance. Uh, they don't always, though.
Sorry to get off the, the subject, but thank you for that, Clark.
No problem.
That information.
All right, so we're ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Luke.
Have a good day.
Have a safe trip.
You too. All right, we will move on then to item number six, action to approve a contract for Helpline Center Network of Care. And good morning, Sarah, you will explain to us.
Sure.
What this exactly is.
Yep, the next two items are things I had mentioned in my monthly report. This first one is the contract with the Helpline Center Network of Care. And I believe Shawna Bachelor and Tara Nelson from the Helpline Center are on Zoom joining us so they can answer any questions that we have. Um, you have the memorandum of understanding and the Helpline Center policy and procedures in your packet for, to refer to for information. What this is basically, it's a software system for our office that would be part of the community wide network of care. The Helpline Center received a Bush Foundation grant, which is allowing them to expand their services to Watertown and Brookings. And so this, um, the services will be the computer, the software system to, um, for documentation. And then to be able to connect with the other agencies, that's the long term goal, to connect with other agencies in the community so we can really do that warm handoff as referrals.
So I have one question. So this is just within our community then, is what we're talking about right now?
Yes, so this, this project, um, it's, it's twofold really. Agencies, if they want, they can, the Helpline Center will develop the software system for the agencies in particular individually. But also then with a larger goal of all of the agencies in the community being able to connect and make referrals to each other through the software system in Watertown. The long term goal is that this would be a connected statewide system, but right now we're just looking at Waters.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, one of the benefits of this is it will collect data and more accurately report the services that we're providing. Um, as you all know, because I said, um, are, we have right now Excel and I just don't feel like it's accurately gathering the, our client information, who we're serving and what we're serving, it's missing pieces of that. So this would fix that.
And also the goal of that is to see where our shortfalls are as well.
Yes, exactly. So right now, if somebody comes in and we're not able to provide a service, there's not really anything documenting the services we're not providing. It's only documenting what we are providing and this documentation system would be able to track that better. So, yeah. There is no cost for the county at this time, um, because it's all covered under their grant. It's about a twenty thousand dollar bill that is covered. And so it's a significant cost savings to the county at this time. Once the grant expires in 2024, then the county would be responsible for the user fees, which is currently thirty dollars a month per user. So it's about three hundred and sixty dollars a year per user. And that is um to cover us as users having access to the system. And then um the Helpline Center would still be the one managing the system.
So, or, cheers. So the user is at the agency or is that individuals in the office, in the agency office?
Good question. That's individuals. So our office would need to.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay, that was my, uh, I think, that was kind of my question, because I read the thirty dollars and I didn't know if that was per client.
Oh, yeah.
Per agency, per individual. So if we have five agencies in town that would be connected, they would each be paying thirty dollars basically. And if they, some of them had more than one, it would be multiples of thirty dollars.
Right, and that's.
More than one boy.
Yeah, and Shawna can talk more to that if we need to, but that would be essentially to anybody that has login access, you know, because it's going to have all the security features too. So that user fee is anybody who's able to log in. And that will be a conversation that we as the community will need to have going forward is how we're going to sustain this long term. I mean, as the county, that might be an expense we could absorb three hundred and sixty a year is, would be reasonable for us. Other agencies, we may need to look at if we have the funding, a foundation or something.
Is this something that's being promoted or through the state health system or?
Yes.
Welfare system?
Yeah, so the Department of Health actually has another grant that they're doing aside from this. And um, so they are working with healthcare systems to establish a similar system. And that's where the long term goal is to get everybody connected. And Shawna, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about one of the goals with the Bush Foundation?
Sarah, would you have them both introduce themselves?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Introduce yourselves for the notes or the minutes.
Hi, my name's Shawna Bachelor. I am the Network of Care Manager at the Helpline Center.
I am Tara Nelson. Um, I'm the Helpline Center Community Specialist.
Thank you.
So Shawna, will you kind of share the long term goal that, for the Bush Foundation?
The, the Bush Foundation goal was a connected closed loop referral system for social care. Um, so this was part of the community innovation um funding that they provided. But the long term goal is that the Department of Health, um, we're working with the Department of Health as a partner on the Community Information Exchange, which would be a statewide um social care connected system that would connect with the health information exchange already in existence. And the Network of Care, its intention is to be a part of that. And the software provider for the Network of Care um will also be submitting an uh proposal to the statewide RFP for that community information exchange. Um, if they don't get it, then we'll be able to build an API that would connect the systems together.
And so the software, thank you Shawna, the software provider is Vision Link, um, and that's currently who's being used for the South Dakota Housing Authority for the CARES Fund. So we're already using the software in our office, which is nice. We're very comfortable with it. And then hopefully they'll be able to link together. To clarify, this contract right now is just saying that we as the county are interested in having this software system in the county. They'll be um working with each other, individual agency, to do the same contract. We'll be initiating it.
Okay, so, can I ask you some questions? Um, so the, at first, I think this is a kind of a, a godsend, it's very serendipitous. We've been talking about this for a few years and I was essentially, we've been SIM mapping with the Sampson gains. That was a narrow focus because that was more on recidivism aspect and keeping people out of the jail. This is a bit broader. But the whole thing about a warm handoff has been something we've, uh, we've known we need to do. So this, this looks like this would facilitate that, kind of force it with all the waivers and all those kinds of things, the private, you know, the confidentiality. Um, forms and all those things would, so that's going to be built into this.
Yes.
And then, so that would be good. Um, the other question, the question I had, so that's, so I think it's really um good. And it, and it does seem to really catalyze a purpose that, or something that we've needed to do for a while. And then the other question I had though, so you're, you're going to need to approach, or Helpline's going to need to approach all the other agencies, like whether they're private or public, you know, public, private or whatever. And their boards of directors are going to need to go on, okay. Um, the question I had is, are there, do you think the, um, the software, the hardware requirements to accommodate? This is a web based thing, as I understand it. Will the hardware requirements be anything that might be onerous for some of the, the smaller private agencies? That would be one, one question I had, so.
The, and Shawna can maybe talk to this a little bit more. Our experience with this software is it's very user friendly. It's really, because it is just webs, web based, you really need a tablet or of some sort or a computer. So it's pretty, um, that's our experience of using it for South Dakota cares. It's very user friendly, easy to use. It won't require a lot of additional hardware, just a basic computer.
So, okay.
Um, one of the nice things in, about that this, is there's the option of, of allowing clients to self enter their information. So they could connect to a link online and do all of the application piece themselves from their phone or from a computer. Um, and so it could actually save our office a lot of time. As far as the community at large, we have started those discussions. We've had a meeting with some of the people that indicated they were interested in this communication method. And so we started having some conversations about how that needs to look for Watertown.
Yeah, so that user fee wouldn't really start then until January of 2025.
Shawna, what is the date that the user fee would start?
The Bush Foundation grant goes, covers those fees and through August of 2024. Um, so that, that, that year, 2024, there would be a prorated rate, um, just because we're billed from the software company for every user on a monthly basis. Um, so it would be prorated from, I guess, September through December of 2024 would start, and then the following year would be a full year.
So the, the bill, you mentioned a software bill, is that, is that something you're going to have to do? Is that a system wide build? Basically, or is that a, each agency needs something done for them? Um, that's.
Well, yes. Yeah, uh, yeah. So for us, they're going to build for our agency. Um, they're also talking about, about building um more of a system wide thing that we could use for, that agencies could tap into. Um, and so it depends on what, but they would build individually.
I think this sounds excellent. It looks like we would have to carry some liability insurance. Is that right?
I, Shawna, is there liability insurance that we're required to have?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Article ten.
Thousand. Article ten, hold harmless agreement. I just want to make sure that.
There is a liability insurance um as part of the MOU because of, so we have, it's, it's more for a cyber breach um kind of situation. We have protection if the software itself has a breach. But for, you know, if, if a user were to give out their password to someone who is unsafe, or there was some unsafe activity on the user end um that was, caused a security breach, um, that could impact both of us, um, our agencies. Um, so that's why that liability insurance is there.
That is something that we also add to what we do for our own security, add that on.
Yeah, that's our, SCPA is working on that.
It's working on it, but I would have to run this by them to make sure we're in compliance with what's being requested here.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need to do that?
Approve on contingency that, how quick does this have to be done by?
Well, so Shawna, what's the ti, I know they, I talked about getting this started at the end of November, but I, what's the timeline?
Um, we discussed starting our discovery meetings at the end of November. Um, it does take four to six weeks uh for the building time. And if we're waiting on paperwork, we just need all of the paperwork, um, and the details of that fleshed out and signed prior to registering any users on the system. But that doesn't necessarily hold up the building part of it. Um, if we're pretty sure that, you know, everything's going to move along, you just need some approvals or to work through some details. Uh, we can still continue on the build schedule.
We meet weekly, so I mean, this.
Right.
Maybe, I mean, I'll get a, I'll get an answer within the day, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we could approve a contingent on what you find out.
Article ten, being in, being in compliance.
Or what we need, yeah, what we need to, to make it in compliance.
Move to prove it.
All right, we have a motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Do we have any more comments, questions?
So to be clear on the motion, it's, it's agreed to, to approve this agreement and with the pending, um, it is approved by the required insurance company.
Compliance, compliance, sort of.
Correct.
That's, that's what my motion, that's what my intent is.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you, and we look forward to the partnership.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, then let's move on to item number seven, action to authorize an application for Department of Health Community Health Worker Grant Funds. This is also Sarah.
Okay, so this one came out of, um, I, uh, the previous director was on the board of the Community Health Worker Program at Lake Area Tech. Um, and so I have, I inherited that and they are expanding across the state. Again, the, part of that grant that the Department of Health got to increase communication, they also um received funds to increase the community health workers across the state. Um, at the board meeting, myself and Brad, the sheriff, and me were all present and they talked about what opportunities there are with the community health worker. And um, so what this, what we would like to apply for is for the county to apply for one of these department, these grants. It's a fifty thousand dollar one year grant. You can apply again for a second year to cover that if you're approved. So it would be potentially a two year grant for fifty thousand dollars to cover one community health worker. Um, just to give some definition to that, a community health worker is a frontline public health worker who's a trusted member of, and are usual, and has an unusually close understanding of the communities served. This trusting relationship enables the worker to serve as a liaison link and intermediary between the health and social services and the community to facilitate access to services and improve the quality and cultural competence of service delivery. So what we would like to do is target high utilizers in the legal system. So looking at people with high recidivism rates in the, in, in and out of the jails, potentially working with people in the court system. Um, so I've reached out to Brad, Matt at the jail, um, Becky at the state's attorney, and Carrie at the human service agency to um find out what their opinions are. They're all very much in support of the county getting this position and creating a partnership where all of our agencies work together to have this person um assist those high utilizers and hopefully prevent people or help people work out of the legal system, eventually saving the county that cost. Um, again, this is a one year grant with a potential for a second year. Beyond that, we would really need to evaluate if it's effective in saving the county costs. And then potentially it would be a position the county would pick up if it's effective in saving money.
Is there a way of tracking this then?
Yes, and so that's one of the big things, and that's part of the application process, is we have to identify like three or four areas that we're going to be tracking the effectiveness.
All right. Who is the actual grant applicant?
So the county, so I, the application would be through my county. And, and the reason for that versus the jail or the sheriff or something is just the flexibility that they would be, they would have by working with that agency.
So it'd be the welfare office?
It would be the welfare office.
Okay, so I, is it involve the county paying a salary to someone?
Yes.
So then dollars, that fifty thousand would be put into a?
That, the fifty thousand dollars would be to cover the salary.
So go to your budget then, maybe?
But when that grant is up, then the county begins paying the salary.
Decide to keep it up. We could reevaluate it two years and see if it's.
Right, but yeah. Right, if it's effective, but yes, it would be a.
Well, okay, then, I mean, is this a full time position? Is this eligible for benefits? There's.
Those, yes, those are all.
Because fifty thousand dollars, I do not believe will cover.
There would.
A full time.
Probably be some expense due to.
Okay. That's what I, I want to.
Yeah, I mean, fifty thousand dollars would go towards.
We do need to establish, yeah.
What that would be.
Yeah, yeah. And so those are all of the things that we would figure out and look into with that.
I like the idea, without having the numbers in front of us, I, you know, I'd like to see what the county cost is going to be at the conclusion of the grant as well. Uh, because essentially we're adding a full time position to county staff, I mean.
And if that could be a shared, I don't know how that would work either, because of those other offices in the county utilizing it, I don't know how that all works.
Yeah.
We, uh, we seem to have a real spurt going on here. We hired a, we increased a part time person in the welfare office last week or two weeks ago to full time status because of a federal program and et cetera, that was going through the year 2024. Uh, now we're asking for another person and I do believe, I don't know, Cindy, isn't a basic uh full time person, doesn't the cost to count a true cost about seventy four thousand dollars?
I, that I can't give you right off the top of my head. I can, you know, just looking at it, a single, single healthcare coverage for an employee would be almost ten thousand dollars. And then their South Dakota retirement match, social security match, um, they're eligible for Delta Dental and um the life insurance, if it would be considered a full time employee.
I mean, there's a lot of nice, there's a lot of good programs. There was another one that's, we just passed, uh, I think we're stacking one on top of the others.
It's just a request to apply for the grant.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean.
So I haven't run all the numbers and everything because I wanted permission before.
Before you came back.
Right. Um.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we authorize her to apply for the grant. Uh, just because we're applying doesn't necessarily mean we have to add the position. Uh, you know, I would, I would like to see the hard numbers of what it's ultimately going to cost the county before we vote to, to accept the grant. But I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with you at least applying. That way we know if we're going to be eligible for it.
So we have a motion and a second.
Sure, just so people understand, this is also what it it within our, the South Dakota Technical Colleges, so to include Lake, Lake Area. This is the Community Healthcare Worker Program is is it's a fairly new program, so and South Dakota's trying to get on board. A lot of states use community health workers, so that's kind of, kind of where the impetus kind of started. This particular um grant would fund basically a, would have also, I think, part of this pot of money is also funding, I think, um, getting a certificate, not a, not a full associate's degree, a certificate for the person that would get hired. I think that's what, if I'm remembering correctly, is that right?
That is correct. It, one of the requirements for this position, it would be that they have to either already be one or complete the certification for the community health worker and that would need to be covered through the grant too. And so um the certification can be done either in person at Lake Area or online. And so um I do have a sample budget that they had given. Um, that training program is forty-five hundred and so that would be covered in part of this too. I can run the hard numbers for the salary. The other piece to look into is what the savings cost would be for the jail part of it. Um, or um, the state's attorney as far as tracking people down and trying to get people to court when they're, or you know, missing, missing appointments and missing.
Those might be hard numbers. They they might be hard, difficult numbers to come up with, you know, but just a a rough estimate.
How does this different for, differ from the uh contract that we have with the company or the healthcare company in Minnesota that evaluates our jail people right now or our health people, the health of the jail uh, not the jail that they uh inmates and uh is this, is this a, that sounds, I I don't know, without knowing more about it, sounds like there might be some redundancy here.
This is more someone who's going to, you know, make sure these people get to their appointments. That is just people who are having issues within the jail, like mental or health.
It's gonna be kind of a field worker, right?
Yeah.
I mean, somebody else working.
Boots on the ground to physically.
If I'm supposed to be at Prairie Lakes at ten o'clock in the morning, this person's gonna make sure that I'm there.
Well, that's.
Is that what this is all about?
So what, so while somebody's in jail, that program works really well, the the one there while they're in jail. So once they're out of jail, and this is the conversations we've had with Matt and the nurse at the jail, um that she'll get unstable in jail, she'll get their meds all regulated, they're doing really well there, and then they get out of jail and they don't have their meds lined up. They don't know their follow-up to the Human Service Agency. They, and so they they get out of jail, they get off their meds, they don't pull up with their mental health, and this worker would be there to bridge that gap. So once they're out of jail and no longer receiving that support, our goal would be to keep them connected with the Human Service Agency or their medical doctor or wherever so that they remain stable and can avoid going back to jail.
So yeah, to clarify, uh, Mr. Waterman's question, um, so the, so the men care that we hired in the jail, that's will get medical and to some extent medical. It's just, but it's only while they're in the jail. So that's, that's basically the the cutoff, this, everything in the jail. This person's on, we're not talking about a medical person here, I'm talking about a person that might have a different appointment, but um, not, not like a nurse, like what men care provides.
Well, I'm gonna thought that they're gonna make sure that I'm taking my meds when I'm supposed to take them.
No, they're gonna make sure you get to the appointments so that you have access to the meds. I mean, nobody can make somebody do something, but they're gonna try to remove the barriers so that they have every opportunity to be successful.
There's a lot more to that disposition than just that though, right? I mean, this is a, this is a a work, like a caseworker, basically, that's gonna be responsible for people when they leave the jail to make sure that they stay on that path. So.
Maybe help arrange.
For what period of time?
That would be determined at, based on need. Um, Sioux Falls has some similar programs where they have some caseworkers that do intensive case management like this. And they've said they've had people following them for five years. Because we know mental health services or mental health issues don't go away quickly. And if our goal is really to prevent long-term issues, we need long-term support. And so it would really be based on individual. Um, hopefully it wouldn't be that long. Hopefully we wouldn't have it, but um if having an individual in the community can support somebody enough that they would avoid going back to jail even in five years, that would be a success and a cost savings to the county.
Right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? I think, what had we called the role on this one, Cindy?
Gable?
Aye.
Um, Waterman?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben Newsom?
Aye.
Anton?
Aye.
That's Ford. In favor, running opposed.
All right, so this is just to apply for it with the hard numbers and then we'll go from there, I guess, and see how that turns out.
Okay, very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
All right, item number eight, um, emergency manager director report. Morning, Jamie.
Good morning.
Hi, Jamie.
Honestly, don't have a whole lot to report. Uh, weather's probably one of the biggest factors I've had, but I'll start with the, yeah, a few responses this month. Early month, the first weekend of October was probably, uh, let's see. We had some flash, uh, the thunderstorm monitoring on Saturday night with some funnel clouds and stored, so I ended up putting out spotters and monitoring weather. And the next morning we had flash flood warnings for the Willow Creek area. Um, the advisement to me from National Weather Service was five and a half feet of rise on that Willow Creek over there on the east side of the interstate from those four inch inches of rain kind of in that Grant County county corridor. Um, there was a few search and rescue calls this last month that I assisted with as well, uh, one in Hamlin County and the one with Clark County with the assistance of Game Fisher Parks. Um, had quite a few, few meetings here. We continue to meet with the county partners. Uh, what is that, the second Friday of the month? Typically, what comes out of them is we just kind of get the know-how of what's happening between our assisted living centers and if there's needs on the healthcare side and um, any other thing with our towns and uh school districts as well. Um, kind of gives us some updates on what's going on with pandemic things in their venues.
That all, I I would just add to that. So that came out of when COVID, you know, we had our task force and so we had branches of task force. We decided to continue that on and it's been, it's been a good, yeah, it's been really good to stay in communication with those smaller communities, so keep them in tune with what's happening.
Yes.
I think.
Very much so. Keeps us um monitoring them both ways and if there's needs, we we address them. Um, also recently hosted a city and county department head, excuse me, meeting with the sheriff's department, Watertown Police Department and the fire department. Typically what comes out of those is future plannings of training needs, um homeland security monies that'll be spent this year, next year and such like that. Um, recently with our hazardous material plan that we adopted here a couple of weeks back. There's some trainings that'll be coming up, um, offered at the vocational school where there has map awareness trainings for response and text for our volunteers in the county and then locally at the city as well. Um, also, uh, as Sarah mentioned quite a bit, I attended uh an inter-agency virtual meeting with her with the welfare director and got to meet those folks that were on with uh basically a lot of health line center, kind of what she just discussed with the folks. Um, plan on attending next week, probably the safety benefits meeting uh in Pira November third and fourth. Um, and we're also gonna be scheduling another LEPC meeting uh to meet our needs on the LMPG program with the state coming up in November, so. Other than that, uh, looking at county COVID numbers yesterday, Department of Health was reporting two hundred and thirty-five active cases, um along with five hospitalizations locally. Our vaccine report shows that there's about thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-five persons that have received a dose of vaccine. Uh, one dose population looks to be thirteen hundred and thirty-five. That second dose population per county is eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-two, and now they're reporting that third dose booster shots that are kind of starting to come amongst us. Um, puts us at about a forty-eight percent vaccination rate within the county. So we're not quite halfway there as far as county numbers. We'll see what happens here with the FDA coming up with approval for children five to eleven. Um, haven't heard anything from any of the healthcare folks yet, but I'm assuming we'll be being in contact with them soon. Uh, weather-wise, like I was mentioning earlier, October month to date, we've been very wet, six point two two inches of moisture along with nine point two three since September first. So our drought monitor has uh really improved. Uh, Western counties in the state still kind of lacking a little bit. Looks like our forecast even to tomorrow, starting tonight and tomorrow will show probably all the way up to another possibility of a half to an inch of rain. All our lakes and rivers are plentiful. Honestly, we kind of calmed down a little bit on the precipitate. Um, tomorrow, National Weather Service is gonna kick off their winter weather preparedness day. Um, quite a bit of media postings along with social media postings, so we'll be sharing information and folks, um probably on our Facebook page, county Facebook page, what they push out, monitor, so good time to prepare for winter. Along with that, that winter outlook was released last week and it looks like we have equal chances on both sides of temperatures and chances of precipitation, so that there is and there isn't equal chances, from what they're telling us right now.
So no guarantees?
No guarantee.
Yeah.
They do have the wind corrected.
It's kind of nice to go middle of the road, I guess. Yeah.
Other than that, not a short, brief one for you. Any questions today? Short and brief is.
I I do have, yeah, I do have a question. In passing in the parking lot after meeting last week, we just talked briefly.
Sure.
About using some of the federal money to uh purchase a standby generator for the courthouse. Did you follow up on that?
I had been uh actually talking with the Hamlin County E M a little bit. He is investigating it. Um, I have not heard back. Day County just installed one at their courthouse. Clark County is in process and Hamlin is getting an estimate. Um, I think the first thing that would need to be done there is we need to study or an estimate of how much power it would take to operate this building.
That's probably a dis.
I would guess that would probably cover under infrastructure needs.
With our building maintenance.
We can check with the other counties and see if they're using those funding to do that.
I'm actually waiting to hear from the contractor to come up and just go through with Steve and the maintenance guys to see what the need would be.
Right.
And um, I don't have any tally of of cost. I'm guessing um briefly it could be anywhere between a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars to do something like that, but even to where it would be.
The extension center because if that's ever a backup hospital, that would be something that would probably be required or was required. I don't know if we had it sufficient enough.
Well, personally, my opinion, I would look at it, we would go down there, roll with that project. Right now, we have to monitor the one that's on the detention center. That's a diesel-driven. I would maybe look at the natural gas driven side of that. That would be my opinion and preference.
That'd be the most costly messing with. Right, be most cost-effective as well.
Having to report to uh the South Dakota Department Ag and Natural Resources on storage capacities and gas mat relations, but um, very preliminary, but yeah, we're, I'm looking at that for you and I, I there's quite a few in our region that are back, uh, backed up for houses to for continuity of government, so. Whether that's a twenty-four K generator or a fifty K generator, I'm unaware until we get that.
Especially.
What the need would be.
After what happened last week, you know, everything was down, so. All right.
But I will get you some answers on that one. Next one?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number ten then, action to approve a notice to bidders for a riprap project. Rick, we have a few things for you, it looks like.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Rick. This is for the project out on County Road twenty dash four where we raised the grade. There's approximately eighty-five hundred ton class B riprap to be installed.
Is it? Twenty dash four?
Twenty-three.
Okay, okay, because yeah, I was gonna say that's what's on here. All right.
I said twenty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, so this was by the specs that they were out there and surveyed and
Yes.
figured out that this is what it's going to take to do that project.
Yep, this is what they figured. They came up with a estimated quantity of class B fractured riprap to do the project.
And this will be the notice to bidders and then we'll take.
I'll make a motion to approve, yeah.
All right.
I would second that motion with an amendment to the motion. I would like to see this changed under general notes to read all, all materials shall meet the specifications for roads and bridges of the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Certificate shall be provided on all bid items stating that they meet specifications to the county highway department. Scratching the words when and request of such certificates.
Hmm.
Has this been the way, why would, I guess?
I think, I I personally think uh I'm offering this amendment because I think all items should have spec sheets attached to them.
I will tell you that this has already been sent to the newspapers because in order to get it published in time for the bid opening, I had to send it out ahead of time. I'm not sure I can get them to fix that, but you could certainly leave it the way it is and just um request that the highway superintendent does ask for those.
Yeah, cuz it has to meet the DOT spec for the riprap.
I think that uh Commissioner Waterman is, is aiming at is we had a little issue with this last riprap go around and we want to avoid that if at all possible.
Well, and and what you can do is you can make it specific that Rick does request um the certificates. I don't think you have, I don't think it needs to change the notice to bidders, but I think you would make it known to the highway superintendent that you do want um those certificates to be.
Put that into an amended motion then? How do we do that?
Or he could.
I could amend my motion. I can amend my motion to require you to have those.
Yes, yeah, amend your motion to to prove the notice to bidders and to um, require, require the highway superintendent to request the certi- certificates, yes.
That is my motion.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. So we have.
We have a second already, unless, well, I don't know.
Second.
He's just adding two.
So I resent my amendment, I resent my amendment to the motion.
We don't really need to amend it since he just changed it cuz we hadn't voted.
Yes. Okay.
We're just clarifying the motion.
All right, so that's the motion and we have a second.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Modified Robert rules.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries as well. All right, now we will move on to a discussion regarding estimated cost to repair a front-end loader um at the highway department.
Let's see this. So.
Too many sheets.
Okay, the first one is the uh the price to repair our loader that is sitting in Sioux Falls. We had the tech game looked at it. Recommended that we take it to Sioux Falls so they could investigate more of what was going on. The transmission, there's a, there's things on that first list that uh need to be done to the loader. Uh, stuff that repairs that we cannot do ourselves. And then also there's a remanufactured uh transmission put in. That's the twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
This is a, this is a under nine fifty H?
Yes.
Uh, is this this one that's scheduled to be replaced next year?
Yes, yeah.
I know we're coming into the snow season and I just by, anybody that drives by the shop realizes that loaders are very poor. This loader would, if we don't do anything with this, or if we do, would this go on a surplus sale or would it be traded in?
We've traded it. Because on the next set of papers that you have is a uh quote to trade it in for a new loader. It just, this has just accelerated the process that we are. for a new loader. It just, this has just accelerated the process that we were gonna go through anyhow. The forty-six thousand fifty dollars is what they'll give for it right now with the transmission laying on bench in Rapid City. If we stick the twenty-seven thousand dollars into the transmission or the loader, they will add that on to that price. So the two thou- two hundred sixty-five thousand forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents is to purchase a new loader. Which is in next year's budget to do.
Which we can pay for next year then.
Yes.
It would not need to go to.
So we get our, we would get our cost back out of this if we put, cuz that's what you're saying, right?
Yes, yeah, if we if we put the twenty-seven thousand dollars into it, that would be added on to the forty-six.
Alright.
They have a loader in Sioux Falls right now that we could possibly use until this one came in. This one is supposed to come in around the end of December.
And what is the cost? Can we have that loader?
That, I'd have to investigate a little more. They said they'd work with us and we're gonna purchase it all, so. So that's something that will have to be determined here in the next week, but we'd uh.
You're referring to the rental.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Yep, this this is off source well. So this is, this bid is off source well.
So he's got a legal bid here.
This is the price it would be.
Like he did the last time off source well with the other for this, but you think you said we'd have to get.
Don't you have to notice advertised?
Yes, but I'm just showing you this now, so it would it would have to go on next week agenda to do this. So I'm just showing you what it is.
Right now, you have no idea what it would cost to rent a rental.
About seventy-five hundred dollars a month, roughly.
Okay.
But uh like I said, they said they'd work with us a little better, hopefully, with the purchase of the loader, so. Say that.
What's that? I didn't thought they'd go by the hour, hour meter.
Most of the time, it's by the month. Yeah. Depending on what's what's going on, it's a flat rate.
So I'd so I'd like to see, I mean, renting a loader, we are gonna need a loader, but I'd like to find out what it's gonna cost to rent the loader from more than one company.
Okay.
I'll uh I'll make some. Next week.
Yep, I'll make some.
Hopefully, the snow walls won't be flying and we won't have to dig out railroad crossings or something like that yet.
So Rick, this one is not on the lot, then this is something.
No, this is something that
will need to.
It it's scheduled to be at at their shop at the end of December.
How how old is this nine fifty? Fifteen years old, fifteen years old, okay. Unfortunately, I decided to go out before.
One thing that makes it easier to swallow is the fact that we get our money back on the trade-in, so. You know, we'd take a loss on.
You know, this some is something that we put the snow blower on. That's you make you hang another eight, nine thousand pounds on the front of this. That has something to do with transmission.
Right.
And maybe I'll look at moving these up a couple of years as to run it up fifteen years because we got another one next year, so.
Do we, do we wanna stay with that same size, but
Yeah.
I know you put more, I know you put like that snow blower not a light.
No, that that it's gotta be at least that big, so.
But wouldn't it? Is there a step up that we can go?
The only bad part about that is you get bigger, you can't use it for, I know we've got a smaller loader, but this loader will fit into different things. If you go too big, you don't have that capacity to fit into smaller items. Because we use this loader in ditches and
Yeah, yeah.
It all kinds of stuff, so.
Asking, you know, is it because I've heard a few of the guys mention that, eh, it gets, I think you mentioned, it gets a little light on the back end when you put the, when you put the uh snow blower in.
Yeah, that the snow blower, that's that's the only bad issue and I'm not sure even if a bigger one would match that, you know? Cuz it's, it sits so far out, cuz the arms are out there and it's, it's not typical. Cuz your bucket, when you raise your bucket, it's back, the loader sticks out so far, it's so much weight on it. Yep.
So do we need to decide today whether going to fix existing one and how long will that take to even fix that?
Yes, that's something that we need to come up with because I, it's sitting there on old in their shop. The the loader itself is in Sioux Falls, the transmission is in Rapid City.
Right.
And they're waiting to hear whether we wanna fix it or just wait and purchase a loader because that forty-six thousand is sitting there with the transmission on it right now.
Right.
But no repairs or anything, so.
Doesn't make sense to me to have a loader sitting in Sioux Falls with transmission in Rapid City. We're not getting any use out of that.
And when I talked to him, they figured it'd be about a week to get it put back together, so.
And I, so if we if we go out and we find out what Reynolds would be, we could have that back next week and then you'd be talking another week if we decided to go with these guys, that it would be till maximum, we'll be talking a couple of weeks out.
Yeah, yeah, because this this loader will not be in until the end of December.
Right.
And that's.
So we just need to know, are we gonna fix our exist- existing one? And use it until this comes in and then you'd add this on to this amount of twenty-seven thousand? Or are we just gonna say we're gonna trade it in and rent one until this comes in? That's basically what we need to know, right?
It seems to me in the end, it would be a little bit cost effective to prepare it, right? Cuz you you eliminate, you could, should eliminate the need for rental, right? Yep, and depending on what the rental costs, you know, because if the rental is less than the twenty-seven thousand. Yeah, but I mean, we're gonna get the money back anyway on the trade-in, so.
Yeah.
Yep, so it's. I'll I'll find out. I'll call John Deere and I'll call Caterpillar to see what one.
That's that's where I'm at too, Lee, is just with what what you said, and that's why I asked the question, are we going to get that money back on a trade-in?
Yep.
We will. I mean, and that would eliminate the rental cost, seventy-five hundred dollars a month or whatever.
Wherever we would get one from, it's
Yep.
We do need a loader. We're not even guaranteed with the supply chain that it is today.
That's the.
That it's gonna be the end of the year or the first of the year.
Yep.
We know that it'll increases, so I would make a motion that we get this repaired now.
Okay.
Alright.
Got a motion and second, we'll repair that one and then.
And I'll make sure that uh the price that the repairs are will be added on to the loader.
Yeah, it's a, it's it's, we need it, we don't know when we're gonna need it and uh the weather can turn crappy in a week.
And the and the loader they have coming, they put our name on it right now, it's a little hole on it, so.
So this quote would still be good?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's a, yep.
Alright, so we got.
It would take the pressure off.
Yeah, got a motion and a second, should be a week then to get it done.
I'm sure they wanna get that transmission in it too and get it out of their shop.
This is a non-budgeted item, right?
The the repairs are a part of the budget every year, but the to purchase the new loader, that is in the budget for next year, so even if it came, we wouldn't have to pay for it till after the first.
I was just being flippant about that, being broke down. We don't expect breakdowns ever.
Alright.
It's maintenance is what it is.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Alright, now you get item number twelve. Action declare an overhead door at the highway department surplus be sold for scrap.
This'll move. Go ahead.
Alright, we got a motion and a second.
Who's the motion, sorry?
Waterman.
Okay.
And Van Dusen seconded it.
We talked about this last week, I think.
It's just formality.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thanks, Rick.
Did I see the new one installed already?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, one guy can open it without you.
As if can you open it without electricity?
Yep, one guy can open it.
Well, that's good because you never know if we're running without power.
Yes.
Yes, we did on that, okay. Alright, we're on to item number thirteen, action to approve automatic budget supplement. How about fourteen, personnel changes? We got some travel requests. You wanna run through those?
Um I don't know how we missed planes or how planes got taken off, but we do have planes to approve.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
We have October payroll planes. I'm not sure what how they disappeared off the agenda, but we do need to take action on that.
I'll make a motion to people.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second.
The total payroll planes are six hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries.
Travel requests are for the emergency management director to attend the twenty-twenty-one safety and loss training conference and for uh we board member to attend a week district meeting and for senior maintenance tech here in government buildings to attend the safety and loss training conference.
And those are approved. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable and those are important for our insurance purposes that they go to this training, it helps out immensely.
Those boards are credit, our loss control credit, which is.
And that's also how we receive some of those wards.
It all ties together, yes.
Will you be attended up city?
No, it's not, not from my side, but it's it's for the guys who
Yeah.
have physical Yep, the responsibilities of keeping safe workers safe, which we all do, but.
It's a different sort of work. It's more working with the equipment and.
Making sure safe equipment is provided and that type of.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, public notices, possible forum of commissioners to be in attendance at we took off the Farmers Businessman Bank when I seen to, that's on November eighteenth. So um does anyone have anything else? I looked at my calendar that I I don't see. Anyone else have anything? Alright, old business, any old, how about new business? How about anything for the open? Evidently, we didn't get any phone calls. The girls haven't said anything. Anybody else?
Just like to uh remind you that you have an open invitation to come toward the center. If you guys wanna do that anytime as a group, just let me know when you wanna come through and that's scheduled.
I'd also mention that we, some of us attended the four H banquet on Sunday afternoon. That was also a very nice event to recognize those four Hers and all their achievements and it was pretty nice attendance, I would say, and a lot of good awards, so that was a nice event.
It was a nice, it was a nice get-together. I thought Jody did a good job.
Yeah, she always does, does excellent job. Um okay, item number twenty, do we have a reason to go into executive session? Alright.
Move to Jerry.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Okay, I need to have you sign that right there.
And look what we have.